All right, moving forward, we have study session, three parts of speech. What are categorized by their roles and functions within the structure of the sentence? Okay, in English language, there are eight parts of speech. It's very important to note that we have a noun, a pronoun, a verb, the adjective, the adverb, the preposition, the conjunction, and the interjection. Okay? Now, what is a noun? Of course, whenever you ask for a noun, it means the name of a person and a place or thing, okay? So they now refers to people, places, ideas, things, concepts. Basically, every day we express nouns in what we say. It's either the mention of a thing, or the name of a person, or something, or idea. Maybe every day in our English language life, if you like to say that, we express the nouns. Okay? So when it comes to being the name of a person, Max, Julie, Catherine, Michael, Bob, animal, dog, cat, a link, and the rest of them. Now, we have different types of nouns. We have the proper noun, the common noun, abstract noun, concrete noun, countable noun, non-countable noun, collective kind, compound noun. What is a proper noun? A proper noun is a name which refers only to a single person, place, or thing, and there is no common name for it. Now, when written in English, a proper noun always begins with a capital letter. It's very important to note that. Example, Melbourne. Okay, Melbourne, this refers to one particular city. We have Steve, refers to a particular name. So when you are writing proper nouns, remember to always start them with a capital letter. We have common noun. A common noun is a name for something which is common for many things. A name, okay, for something which is common for many things, or persons, or places. Now, a common noun encompasses a particular type of thing, person, or places. For instance, we have country. This country can refer to any country. It can refer to Nigeria, to US, to UK, maybe to Canada. It's the country is the common name for all these countries, okay? Okay, we have abstract noun. An abstract noun is a word for something that cannot be seen, but it's there. Abstract, cannot be seen, but it is there. Most times, abstract nouns are like feelings. You cannot see them, but you know it is there, it is expressed. We have true, lies, happiness, sorrow, time, friendship, humor, enthusiasm, comedy. You can see it, but you can feel it. These are abstract nouns. Okay, moving forward, we have concrete noun. A concrete noun is the exact opposite of abstract noun. It refers to the things we see and have physical touch with. For instance, chair. Concrete nouns are more like things that you can see around yourself, okay? They have chair, table, bath, bowl, water, money, sugar, sand, rain. You can see them, you can feel them, all right? The countable nouns, the nouns that can be counted are called countable nouns. Okay? Countable nouns are things that you can count. And the most characteristic with themselves, articles. We'll get to that. But those articles are like A, an, and B. For instance, chair, a chair. Table, bat, twenty chairs, thirty tables, fifty sugar, twenty bowls. You can count it, right? Whereas non-countable nouns are those nouns that you cannot count. Of course, you cannot count water, you cannot count sugar, you cannot count oil, you cannot count salt. And some people say, and I believe, you cannot count sand. Okay? So that's for non-countable noun. We have collective noun. A collective noun is a word for a group of things, people, or animals, right? A collective, these are things that belong to the same category, but are given a collective name. For instance, family, all right? Okeke, Juliana, Prince will all belong to Okeke family. All of them are family, all right? We have team, we have jury, cattle. Where I live, man, the cattle is big, or small, black, or white. All of them come together to call cattle. We have animal, we have insect, all right? Okay. Okay, we have the next one, which is a compound noun. Sometimes, two or three nouns appear together, or even with other parts of speech, and create, if you want it, compound nouns. Compound nouns are like two nouns coming together to create a particular word. We have six part, for the guys. You don't just say, oh, you have part. Of course, you have to say, you have six parts. Five-year-old, all right? A five-year-old child was great. A five-year-old, five-year-old is coming together to make one more, a compound noun. And snowball, snowball, mailbox, friendship. These are what compound nouns, okay? So moving over, we have pronouns. What is a pronoun? A pronoun is used in place of a specific noun, mentioned earlier in the sentence. Of course, to avoid repetition in a sentence, it's advised that you use a pronoun. You're telling me your story, oh, Michael is a good boy, Michael bought a car, Michael stole a chair. Michael is, he's going to marry. But if you replace those nouns with a pronoun, it makes your story more interesting. For instance, Michael is a good boy. He gets up early in the morning. So the he there is replacing the noun, which is Michael. We have the coach settled several key points. He, who is still talking, the coach, all right? Wanted the team to memorize them. The then there is still representing what, the several key points that the coach mentioned. Esther is a businesswoman. Yeah, she travels every six months, she loves jewelry. So it's easier to say it like this than when you say Esther is a businesswoman, Esther loves jewelry. So you replace those pronouns, those nouns with pronouns. Okay, types of pronouns. We have subject pronouns, object pronouns, possessive pronouns, reflexive pronouns, intensive, relative, demonstrative, and interrogative pronouns. We're going to take them one after the other. So what is a subject pronoun? A subject pronoun works as the subject of the verb in a sentence, just like a name indicates. It works as the subject in a sentence. For example, Mike can't attend the party. He has gone to his grandparents'. The he there is the subject, Mike is the subject, okay? But if the he is replacing the subject pronoun, now becoming the object, he has gone to be with his grandparents'. We have object pronouns. Object pronouns work as the object, or indirect object in the sentence, replacing the antecedent object. For instance, I will give you a present on your birthday. I will give you, you are the object receiving the present on your birthday, okay? I have a great idea for you. This one is coming after the preposition. After the preposition, which is for, we have the object, you. Tell her that she will take the job. Her is the object. Tell who, her. So you, which is the her, is the one receiving the action, okay? All right, we have possessive pronouns. Possessive pronouns replace the nouns of the possessive adjective. Okay, we have my, our, your, our, he is there. Now, the possessive pronouns turn to be the object, or when you are repeating it in a sentence, okay? Now, we have, I thought my bag was lost. My bag, all right? Now, listen, but the one girl we found was mine. So of course, you cannot say, but the one girl we find, found was my bag. So you replace it with a possessive pronoun, my. Your vacation will start next week. Our is tomorrow. Your vacation will start next week. Our, oh, is tomorrow. No, it's simpler to say, ours is tomorrow. That's for possessive pronouns, okay? Reflexive pronouns. Reflexive pronouns redirect a sentence or a clause back to the subject, which is also the direct object of that sentence, okay? They redirect a sentence back to the subject. Let's look at the example. Since she is her own boss, she gave herself a raise. You see that the person talking is still the person receiving the action. Since she is her own boss, is reflecting back to her, she gave herself a raise. She allowed herself one time to get ready. She allowed herself. She is the one performing the action, and she is the one receiving the action. Just like when people say, me, myself, and I, that's not really the same, right? But it's just a way of telling you, reflexive pronoun, okay? The computer restarts itself every night, okay? We told ourselves, okay? Of course, you can't say, we told me ourselves. No, we told ourselves that we are so lucky to be alive. So here, you perform the action, and you receive it back, okay? Intensive pronouns. Intensive pronouns add emphasis or importance, but do not act as the object in the sentence. They can appear right after the subject, okay? They add emphasis or importance on what is already said. For instance, I will do it myself, all right? That's like saying, that's, you're trying to emphasize on the fact that you say what you do, do it yourself. I will do it myself. I myself saw the missing boat, saw the missing boat into the harbor. I myself, all right? Saw the missing boat into the harbor. We intend to do all the work ourselves. So you are talking, all right? But you're also emphasizing that she's talking, will be the one to carry out the action, all right? We have related pronouns. Relative pronouns introduce the relative clause. They are used to make clear what is being talked about in a sentence, all right? For instance, the car that was stolen was the one they loved the most. The car, that was stolen, all right? You're explaining the car, and you're directing it, or you're connecting it to the one that was stolen, was the one they loved most, okay? A person who loves nature is a good person. You're relating the person to who loves nature is a good person. Our school, which was founded in 1995, is being renovated. All right, we have demonstrative pronouns. Demonstrative pronouns normally indicate the closeness of, or distance from the speaker, either literally or symbolically, okay? Most of the examples of demonstrative pronouns are this, that, those, and the rest of them. So for instance, we have, that is a long way to go. That is more like a demonstrative pronoun. This car is my car, demonstrative pronoun. Hand me that cricket bat, demonstrative adjective. That cricket bat, a bit specific of which particular bat, so be handed over. All right, the next one is interrogative pronouns. Interrogative pronouns produce questions. These are questions like what, how, which, whose, who, and the rest of them, okay? Who, whom, and whose refer to questions related to a person or animal. So let's look up some examples. What was the name of your dog? Interrogative pronoun, what was the name of your dog? What is the interrogative pronoun there. Which is your favorite movie, right? That's interrogative pronoun, which. Who works for you? Asking a question on the person, who works for you? Okay, so moving over to verbs. A verb is a word or a combination of words that indicates action, or a state of being, or condition. Most people will say that verb is a doing or a, well, yes. Whatever thing you do is referred to as a verb, or that refers to a state of action. So for instance, we have, Jacob works in the morning. It's a usual action. Jacob works in the morning. The verb there is works, okay? Mike is going to school, a condition of action. Mike is going, is still in process, to school. Albert does not like to walk, a negative action, all right? Does not like to walk. It is present and it's continuous. Anna is a good girl. There's a state of being, it is, it is, I mean, it does not change. Anna is a good girl, okay? Now, we have different types of verbs. We have the finite verb, the non-final verb, actual verbs, linking verbs, auxiliary verbs, and modal verbs. So we're going to take them one after the other. What is a finite verb? A finite verb are the actual verbs, which are called the roots of sentences, all right? It is a form of a verb that is performed by, or refers to the subject. So a finite verb is always, most times, carried out by the subject. Alex went to school. The subject here is Alex, and he is the one performing the action, and the verb there is what, went, okay? Robert plays hockey. Robert is the subject, and followed by the verb, plays. He is playing for Australia. He is playing for Australia, all right? Non-final verbs are not actual verbs. They do not work as verbs in the sentence, rather, they work as nouns, as adjectives, adverbs, and the rest of them. For instance, Alex went abroad to play, okay? And Alex went abroad to play. To play there is a verb, but it's a non-final verb. Playing cricket is his only job. This is a present participle. Playing cricket is his only job. I have a broken bat. This is past participle, a break, all right? The other one is present continuous, so play, playing, okay? Yeah, moving forward, we have actual verbs. Actual verbs indicates what the sentence, or whatever, what the subject of the sentence performs. An actual verb tells you what the subject performs. We have transitive verbs and intransitive actual verbs. We have transitive actual verbs and intransitive actual verbs. For instance, I painted the car. The verb paints there, demands and objects to be painted. I painted, what she paints? I painted the car, all right? She is reading the newspaper. The verb read asks the question of what is she reading, all right? She's reading the newspaper. And the answer, which is the newspaper, is the object of the sentence. Now, intransitive verbs do not act upon anything, okay? They just stand on their own, they are final, they don't act on anything. For instance, she smiled, all right? She smiled, that's, the verb smile cannot have any object, since the action of smiling does not talk upon anything. She smiled, that's a full stop. She did smile, they didn't say she smiled on his boyfriend, or her boyfriend, or anybody. She just smiled, that's it. I woke up, or I wake up at 6:00 AM. No subject is made yet for this verb. I wake up at 6:00 AM. It is already intransitive, okay? Right, moving forward, we have linking verbs. A linking verb adds details about the subject of the sentence. It adds details about the subject of the sentence. In its simplest form, it connects the subject and the component, right? For instance, she appears ready for the game, okay? A linking verb, she appears ready for the game. She is ready for the game, you can as well say she is ready for the game, but, I mean, you want to link being ready, okay, to the game. She appears ready for the game. The food seemed delicious. The food was delicious, right? But seemed is more like linking the feeling, yeah, to the food. You look happy. You could as well say, you are happy, but you look, meaning that your expression indicates that you are happy, all right? Auxiliary verbs. Auxiliary verbs are also called helping verbs. And auxiliary verb extends the main verb by helping to show time, tense, and possibility. We have, the auxiliary verb here is the verb to be, to have, and to do. For instance, Alex is going to school. Of course, you can't say Alex going to school. It doesn't make sense. You have to put an auxiliary verb, which is the verb to be, coming to this third-person singular, because is. Alex is going to school. They are walking in the park. You can't say, they're walking in the park. Where is the helping verb? They are walking in the park. I have seen a movie. You can't say, I seen a movie, I seen a movie. No, you have to put a helping verb, which will help the verb see, to be have. I have seen a movie. It's important to note that do is also an auxiliary verb used in asking questions, okay? All right, so moving forward, we have modal verbs. A modal verb is a kind of an auxiliary verb, they almost look alike, okay? It assists the main verb to indicate possibility, potentiality, ability, permission, expectation, complication. Examples of modal verbs are can, could, must, may, might, have to, shall, should, will, would. For instance, I may want to talk to you again, all right? You can say, I want to talk to you again, but adding a modal verb shows possibility, or the, uh, uh, the across possibility of you having to talk to me again. So you say, I may want to talk to you again. They must play their best game to win, all right? They must play, which is showing what's expectation, right? They must play their best game to win. She shouldn't call him, right? She shouldn't call him, that's more like an obligation. She should call him. I will go there, that's like a promise or possibility. I will go there, okay? Moving forward, we have adjectives. What is an adjective? An adjective describes or modifies nouns and pronouns in a sentence. Adjectives are like, um, um, words that tell you, give you more details about a sentence, okay? They tell you more about what a sentence is. They can educate size, shape, right? Durational feelings, content, emotions, and the rest of them. For instance, the team has a dangerous Batman. They can actually say the team has a Batman, but what sort of Batman? That's the question. Now, an adjective explains to you what kind of Batman they have, a dangerous Batman. I have ten candies in my pockets. I could say, I have candies in my pockets. But how many candies do I have? Ten candies. I love that red car. You could say, I love the car. And I would ask you, which car, all right? I need it to be specific. An adjective gives you the specificity of the sentence of a word. So I love that red car. I earn more money than he does. I earn money than he does. How much more money do you earn? I earn more than he does, all right? Okay, we have types of adjectives. We have descriptive adjectives, we have quantitative, proper, demonstrating, possessive, interrogative, indefinite, articles, and compound adjectives. We'll take them one after the other. The number one, descriptive adjective, just like the name indicates. It describes, all right? A descriptive adjective is a word which describes nouns and pronouns, tells you how it is, the shape or the form in which it is coming. For instance, I have a fast car, all right? Maybe if you were in the middle of something, and the car you are in is slow. Oh, no, I have a fast car, right? You're not just saying that you have a car, but you're saying that you have a fast car. I am hungry. The word hungry is providing information about a subject. I am hungry, yeah? Okay, so the next one, quantitative adjective, right? The quantitative adjective provides information about the quantity of the nouns and pronouns. How many, how much. These are, this type belongs to the question category of how much, or how many. For instance, I have thirty bucks in my wallet, all right? You could say I have money in my wallet, but quantitative, I need to know how much do you have. I have thirty bucks in my wallet. They have three children. They have children. But quantitative adjective tells you how many they have. They have three children. You should have completed the whole task, yeah? I'm not saying you should have completed some of the tasks, or the first task. I'm saying the whole, how much of the task, the whole task. That is for quantitative adjective, all right? We have proper adjectives. A proper adjective is the adjective of form, all right? They are adjectives that indicate form, or where proper nouns modify or describe other nouns, pronouns. They become proper adjectives. Let's see, American cars are very strong. A proper adjective, and being proper means specific. American cars are very strong. Irrespective of the American car, be it, uh, whatever sort of car it is provided, it's an American car. All of them, all right, are very strong. Chinese people are hard workers. Whether it be a Chinese child, a Chinese man, a Chinese woman, a Chinese old man, a Chinese young woman. Chinese people, right, are hard workers. I love KFC burgers. I love burgers, but I love KFC burgers. So whatever sort of burger it is, as far as Kentucky Fried Chicken burger, I love it, okay? Demonstrative adjective. A demonstrative adjective directly refers to something or someone. Demonstrative, just like the name implies, it demonstrates. And this word includes these, that, those, these, right? They are pointing to someone, they are demonstrating something. Let's see some examples. Okay, that building is so gorgeously decorated. That refers to a singular noun that are from a speaker. That building, probably the person was pointing when he or she was speaking. That building is so gorgeously decorated. This car is mine. This car is mine, they're demonstrating, all right? These carts, accused, these carts. Once a demonstrative adjective is mentioned, the possibility that the person you're talking to looks to see is there, because of course you're using a demonstrative adjective. Even if you don't point, the person looks to see which particular object that you're referring to. Okay, we have possessing adjective. A possessing adjective indicates possession or ownership. It subjects the belongingness of something to someone, or something. For instance, my car is parked outside. My car has a possessive adjective, okay? His cart is very cute. His, possessive adjective. Our job is almost done. Our job, possessive adjective, okay? And interrogative adjective asks a question, just like the name implies, interrogative. It asks questions like which, what, whose, all right? Let's see some examples. We have, which phone do you use? Okay, which, interrogative adjective. What game do you want to play? Whose car is this? Interrogative word, adjective. Okay, moving forward, we have indefinite adjectives. What's an indefinite adjective? This adjective describes or modifies a noun generally, okay? The provide indefinite or unspecified information about the noun. This includes few, many, much, most, or any, each, every, any, a number, several, some. It's not specific, but it's, I mean, it gives you an information, but it's not really specific, okay? Now, we have, um, um, in articles, okay? All right, okay, so we have few, many, much. So an example of this could be, give me some oranges, all right? Some oranges, I don't mean a particular number, so you can bring two, you can bring three, or give me some water, I mean, I don't mean a bottle, but just some water. Call me a few friends, okay? I don't mean a particular number, just a handful of friends, okay? So moving forward, we have articles. We have articles. Articles determine the specification of nouns. Articles are a and an, and they are used to refer to an unspecified noun. Whereas the is used to refer to a specific noun. A and an unspecified, all right? Give me a ball, I'm not specific about the ball. Give me the ball. That means there is a particular ball that I'm talking about, all right? For instance, a cat is always afraid of water. Here, the noun cat refers to any cat, not specific, a cat, okay? Maybe the person talking is a zoologist, and the person is telling you, a cat, or cats, are always afraid of water, not specific about a particular cat. But when I say the cat is afraid of me, that means there's a particular cat in the neighborhood I'm talking about. Maybe the one with a spotten black, right? The cat is afraid of me. And electronic products should always be handled with care. An electronic, irrespective of the electronic product, whatever it is, but provided it is an electronic product, it should always be handled with care, okay? Compound adjectives. This type of adjective usually combines more than one word into a single lexical unit and modifies a noun. They are often separated with a hyphen, okay? They are often separated with a hyphen, okay? What's like, uh, I have a broken down sofa, yeah? You can't say, I have a, I have a broken sofa. Well, it's okay, but I have a broken down sofa. You bring the broken and down, put a hyphen in the middle of it and you make it one word. That's a compound adjective. I saw a six foot long snake. I saw a six foot long. You see the hyphen between six and foot and foot and long, right? Six foot long snake. He came to me and I'm going to kill you now, Luke. See that? That's a compound adjective. He came to me and I'm going to kill you now, Luke. So I'm going to kill you now, Luke is a compound adjective describing how the person was looked at, okay? So the degree of adjectives, right? There are three degrees of adjectives. We have the positive degree, the comparative degree and the superlative degree. These degrees are applicable only for the describing adjectives, okay? For instance, the positive degree, he's a good boy. He's a good boy, right? The comparative degree, he is better than any other boy. He's better than any other boy. The superlative, he is the best boy. That means irrespective of how many boys there are, that's a superlative level, okay? He is the best boy, okay? So moving further, we have adverbs. An adverb is a verb, is a word, sorry, a set of words that modifies verbs, adjectives and other adverbs. It tells you when, where and how an action is performed or indicates the quality or degree of the action. That's an adverb for you, okay? It tells you how, when or how much the action is carried out. For instance, Robin is always hungry for success. Robin is always, not just that he is hungry for success, but it's a, it's, it's a continuous, it's a habitual thing, alright? He's always hungry for success. So that answer how, okay? How hungry is he for success? And you say, he's always hungry for success. I love her very much. You could actually say I love her, but when you add very much, it gives you the impression that you have a deep love for the person you're talking about. So I could say, how much do you love her? I love her very much, okay? He's running fast, alright? How fast or rather, how is he running? He's running fast. Alex works hard. Alex works, or Alex is a hardworking man, okay? That's showing you that Alex not just works, but he works hard. He wrote that willingly. How did he write it? He wrote it willingly, okay? So that's adverb for you. Now, types of adverbs. We have conjuncting, adverb, sentence, adverbs, adverb of time, frequency, which answers the question when. Adverbs of place, direction, where. Adverbs of degree, how much. And adverbs of manner, how, okay? So take that one after the other, um. Okay, okay. A conjuncting adverb connects phrases or independent clauses. It provides transitions between ideas and shows relationships. Conjecting adverbs are also called connectors. They connect two together. It rained last night. Nonetheless, some people say, nonetheless. It's nonetheless, the final match has not been cancelled. It rained last night, nevertheless, you might, okay? Nonetheless, the final match has not been cancelled. So that's like a connector there. We are still confused however, alright, if the umpires will come, okay? Last season, there was a great drought. Consequently, we would not grow crops. So consequently, there is collecting the first phrase and the second phrase. Sentence adverbs. A sentence, sentence adverb starts the sentence and modifies the whole sentence. It starts it and it modifies it. For instance, hopefully, we will win the match. Hopefully, right? You are starting it with hopefully and you remain positive. We will win the match, okay? Apparently, the sky is getting cloudy. I mean, it's obvious. Apparently, this cloud is getting cloudy. Certainly, I did not think of coming here. Certainly. This is more like, um, starting something on a positive note, ending it on a positive note. You can't say hopefully, we will lose the match. No. Hopefully already indicates that there is hope, there is positivity to what you're saying. Okay, adverbs of time and frequency, when. This, they indicate time or frequency of the action in a sentence, alright? They answer the question when or how frequently the action was performed. Let's see some examples. I went to school a little late yesterday, right? Frequency. How did it happen? I went to school a little late yesterday, okay? He always gets a good result. Always. How often? Always, right? That's like it happens almost every day, okay? He smokes occasionally. How often does he smoke? Well, what's normal? Maybe when he's with a couple of friends, he smokes, alright? Adverbs of place or direction, where. This indicates the place or direction of the action in a sentence. It answers the question where the action was performed or when the action took place. I went through the jungle. How did you go? How did you get here? I went through the jungle. He plays in the field. Where does he play in the field? Alex is going to school. Where is he going to? He's going to school, right? Adverbs of degree. This talks about how much. Adverbs that express the importance of level, of degree of the action in the sentence are called adverbs of degree. And this answers the question, how much? She completely forgot about her anniversary. She didn't just forget the anniversary, but she completely. That means maybe for the, the whole day, she never talked about it. She completely. How much the depth, the degree of something, she completely forgot about her anniversary. I read the newspaper or I read the newspaper thoroughly. I mean, how do you read? How much, um, um, attention do you pay to the newspaper? I read it thoroughly, thoroughly. I am so excited about the new job. I'm not just excited about the new job, but I am so excited about the new job, okay? Adverb of manner, this is how, okay? Adverb of manner expresses the manner or approach process of the action in the sentence. This, uh, like, um, like you have beautifully, equally, painfully, carefully, hungrily, quickly, coldly, hugging. For example, let's divide the prizes equally, okay? What manner? How do we divide it, okay? Let's divide it equally. Please handle the camera. How should I handle it? Carefully, okay? Mike is walking. How is he walking? Slowly, alright? That's, that's like, um, 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 yeah. Adverb of manner shows you action. You actually see the person doing it. He's looking at me beautifully. You can actually see the person looking at you beautifully, alright? So moving forward, we have prepositions. A preposition is a word that indicates the relationship between a noun and the other words of a sentence. They explain relationships of sequence, space and logic between the objects of the sentence and the rest of the sentence, okay? We have prepositions like for, on, before, under, beside, middle of, you know, um, after and the rest of them. I am going to Canada. Of course, you can say I am going to Canada. You have to add a preposition there. To Canada. Alex threw a stone into the pond. Alex threw a stone. Where? Into the pond. It shows the direction where the action was carried out. The president is inside a box. I have to say here that prepositions gives the details, okay, of the position of a noun. That of preposition, we have prepositions of time, prepositions of place and direction, preposition of agents of things and phrasal prepositions, okay? Prepositions of agents of things, they indicate a causal relationship between nouns and other parts of the sentence, okay? For instance, this article is about smartphones. Prepositions of agents of things. This article is about smartphones, okay? Most of the guests have already left, okay? Casual relationship between the noun and other parts of the sentence, okay? I will always be here for you. You see that? For is a preposition accompanying you. Of is a preposition accompanying the guest. About is a preposition accompanying smartphones, okay? We have phrasal prepositions. A phrasal preposition is not a prepositional phrase. Don't mistake the two. But they are a combination of two or more words which functions as a preposition. We have along with, apart from, because of, by means of, according to, in front of, in the middle of, okay? For instance, they along with their children went to Atlanta. They along with, you see the two of them as a phrasal preposition. According to, of course, you can say according the new rules. You have to put to, because according is with to. The new rules you have not read, okay? In spite of being a good player, he was not selected. In spite, you can't say in spite of being a good, oh yeah? In spite of being a good player, he was not selected. So these are prepositions, okay? They are more like two phrases coming together to make one, um, preposition, okay? Yeah? Okay, we have conjunctions. Conjunctions are used to join clauses, phrases and words together for constructing sentences. Okay, they're used to join, they conjoin. They use, they are used to connect, uh, two phrases or clauses together. Alex and Robin are almost together. Alex and, the and there is conjunction. Connecting Alex and Robin. Alex plays well, but Robin plays better than him. Alex plays well, the conjunction there, but Robin plays better than him. So that's for conjunctions, okay? Now, moving further, we have interjections. What is an interjection? An interjection is a kind of explanation inserted into regular speech. Interjections express a sudden move or emotion or feeling, but it goes with emphasis, okay? Wow, that's an amazing thing, okay? It means not enough to just say, that's an amazing thing, but adding the wow there. It's an interjection. It's a sudden expression of your excitement, of mood, of your mood. Ow, I did not want him to come, okay? Voila, the celebration is here. That's an excitement, okay? Dammit, you messed the room up. And then, and I have to say here that there are some informal interjections as well that are not used in formal sentences, like this one. Dammit, you messed the room, the room up, okay? So that's for interjections. So, okay, yeah, I said that, right? That some interjection interrupted conversation or a thought of what someone's attention grew up at, okay? For instance, um, this type of interjection could be seen in the middle of a sentence. It must not start the sentence, no. Maybe the person is talking, for instance, your, um, shirt has a stain on the back. On, the on there is an interjection, okay? I want to, uh, ask you out on a date. You see that? The on there is an interjection. It's coming in the middle of the sentence. Some interjections express only yes or no, right? Only yes or no. Yes, I will most definitely do it. Yes, I will most definitely do it. Positive, it stays positive. Nah, you're not going. It stays negative. It's not meant. It's either it is a yes or it is a no. Some interjections are used to get someone's attention. For instance, yo, Alex, get in the car. Yo, Alex, get in the car. The yo calls the attention of Alex and then he turns, get in the car. Hey, will you give me that ball? Hey, the person turns and then you say what you want to say. So you use this to get the attention of the person. Yoohoo, is there anyone, okay? Oh, that feels terrible, alright? At last, they have lost the match. So, I mean, you walk into a room, someone is looking at you to give him, um, the information of the matter. Alas, and the person goes, okay, what is it? They have lost the match. So you use that to get the attention of the person.